This conference will now be recorded.
I'll call the meeting to order of the Library Board of Trustees of the City of Davenport on October 17, 2023. It is, on my watch, 12:06. We have a quorum. The board members here are Joe and Laura and Amanda, myself, and Craig Cooper via computer. And then we also have staff members here. And Marion Guinness and our director is here. So we will move to the introduction of we'll do the roll call then. So, Joe?
Here.
Craig?
Here. Here.
Laura? Amanda?
Here.
And myself, we're all present, obviously. We'll move to the item two on the agenda, the consent agenda. Is there any, is there a motion to approve that?
So moved.
A second.
Is there a clear motion in a second to approve that? And call for the vote. Craig?
Yes.
Laura?
Agreed. Yes.
Amanda?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
And myself, that's yes. That passes. And move to the next item, which is public with comment. I don't see anyone here for public with comment. So we'll move to the next one, reports communication. Friends, do you have anything, Jeff, other than?
Go ahead. Yep, thanks, Tom. I'll just pass on one thing from the most recent Friends meeting. Lexi presented a funding proposal to the Friends for a one-time contribution of about $1,300 to promote 1,000 books before kindergarten through advertisements on the old PBS station. The Friends did approve that funding, which will allow us to run 15-second on-air spots three times a week for about 13 weeks total during educational programs. And the PBS station also offered to match our contribution. I think an exact, match the double the number of spots. So we'll see, we'll see how that, that goes. We'll be able to do some pretty good post comparisons if there is an increase in the number of sign-ups and participation programs. That's the only thing that's on for the Friends.
That's good.
Oh, and I guess the thing is, they are doing their RFP process. So tomorrow, they're interviewed with a couple of, Thursday, Thursday, they're interviewed with a couple of representatives.
For?
Well, they did, they issued an RFP for financial services.
Okay.
Something that they intend to do every five years. I think it's the third time in 10, eight, somewhere closer, closer to that.
Okay. Jeff is educational TV? Yes.
Go ahead.
Are they, are they offering like in-kind donation, you know, airtime, or are they offering cash?
Yeah, good question. That's, that's what it was, is just the on-air. They're going to double the number of spots.
That's good. Thank you. We'll move to the next item, which is committee reports. Finance. In your packet, there were two budget reports. One was the final for last year, which would have, would have had all the adjustments that the city made. And it came in pretty close. And I think we, I don't think there were any huge surprises there over what we've seen in the past. And then the other one, we had a budget, which was just for the first three months of this year, which is 25% of the year. And again, there, the expenses were running, I mean, the benefits were at 26%, and the total city appropriation was at 27%. So we're running very close to right where we should be. And then as part of that, Jeff and Steve and I met with the city administrator and the CFO about the effects of the latest property tax adjustment system, the state enacted, where they rolled all the levies into one. And we were concerned about the library's levy. You know, because would we now be, in effect, competing with police and fire? Because it'd all be in the general fund. We got some assurances from, from both the CFO and the city administrator in regards to that. And they don't see in the next several years, there being, unless there's a huge adjustment in the assessments, that it doesn't appear that there's going to be a huge impact on the city budget. You know, that's all guesswork. They did say that, they did tell us that what was in the library fund, the special levy, which you see on the bottom of your budget page, I mean, at the end of one of the most recent budget report, we had 1,383,0540 in there. That will be considered a, let's call it a special revenue fund. And so that can't be thrown into the general fund. They suggested that that money only be used for capital projects, which is kind of what we have been doing. Like, for example, we put 500,000 into the renovation here. You know, we have tended to use that money just for capital, one-time kind of a thing. So I don't think there's any, or any huge surprises there. I guess you could, we could all take our own question as to whether, how serious, you know, seriously, you could take their assurances, but that is what they gave us.
So is the $600,000 difference because of the quarter?
Oh, oh, on the two budget? Yeah, one, one of them is just, one of them is as of three months later after the end of the year.
Can maybe another thing to share, I was also at the meeting, would be that the city did share that the ARPA funds will be continued for another year to fund the social worker position. So that was good news. You know, because we weren't really sure what that balance would be and how long that would continue. So that was a positive piece. And I think that all echo Tom's comments that we walked out of the meeting pleasantly surprised. But of course, you know, a small meeting before the city received, you know, before we know the roll back numbers that come from Des Moines and how, what the assessments are going to be and what the actual budget looks like. You know, it's really hard to kind of rely on that reasonably.
You'll remember, you're the, you said they did the assessments wrong. The city had to adjust the budget significantly. So hopefully, they won't, that won't happen again, the January surprise after the budget was finished. I also think that right now with the changes in all of the levies, I don't know if anybody knows what it looks like five years from now because of the changes just in how Iowa is assessing things. So I'm sure there were probably a bit, you know, it's not, it's not, it's not life as usual anymore. So, and that impacts every part of the city. But, you know, the city is still very healthy, so. But I know there's, I'm sure there's more care. And yeah, five years from now, it'll be this because again, it's completely turned, it's completely turned on its head, right, for everybody?
Well, you know, part of the issue to me, and I raised that issue at the, at the meeting, was way back when, they put in the 810 cap top levy for the general fund. That levy, that cap is apparently still in law.
That's right.
And so you just wonder, is that going to come back and buy everybody in the butt?
Yeah, it may well, but I don't think we control that. I don't think the city controls that, so I mean, that's
I understand that.
Yeah, I mean, it's, yeah, I mean, they're, oh, this, this, these gears get changed out, the whole structure of the levies. But this is still in place over here. And how, and I think that's part of the question is how does, has that ultimately impact? Yeah, so we just, we need to keep, I mean, the best way out is probably to continue to do as much economic development as we can and finding new taxing sources and, you know, part of the long range, which has nothing to do with the library, but long range that we have now, the Northwest, the new Northwest Business Park, which is, will be at the west, far west, northwest part of the city. 14 million of the ARPA dollars was allocated to do a vital sewer connection for that. As the park, you know, we're filling up and the one that we're, that we've been doing was Sterilite and all that. So this is the new place. And it's on the west side of town. And that will be, the other good thing about that site is all the dollars, so the tax dollars allocated to schools at the current site go to North Scott Schools. So this one, they will go to our city schools. But that's kind of in the future. But the ARPA allowed us to start thinking, because it would have taken years to raise the money for that sewer, right? And so we were able to like jumpstart that up there. So that's what I think as a city we need to keep doing. We have to keep increasing our ability to attract, you know, to be an attractive site for people and to raise our tax, you know, based that way, rather than all the other things that seem to be impacted. But, you know, that's controlled by the state, so. That's a, that's probably a Pollyanna view, but I don't know what else to, you know, make more money. So.
What more can you do?
Exactly.
So we'll move on to the next item, which is personnel. We have a meeting.
Yep, I mean, just to follow up, last month we talked about, we have Jeff's annual exam, or next year. Annual, annual evaluation, yes, appraisal coming up soon. So Jennifer will be sending out staff surveys very shortly. And they already went up. Okay, perfect. And then you guys will be getting those to review. And then I'll be sending out your surveys at the end of the month. We'll do the review the next meeting.
And Amanda, did you get the email I sent?
I just got it today, yes. I will send that out to you as well. Jeff's just sent me his update on all the goals and achievements of last year. So be forwarding that to all of you to review as well.
Thank you. Advocacy, I know Malvika's not here. Is there a?
Well, I maybe chime in here and just say that I thought one of the questions that I raised when we were in the meeting with the city administrator and the CFO was what can we be doing outside of the formal budget process to kind of protect the library's interests and its place in the budget? And we had a really nice conversation where Corey basically recommended to continue our community partnerships, to do what we can to enhance awareness, to make the public, you know, aware of city, the funding, the budget process, all of those things, and also to just like build our alliances. And so, you know, I think that just as a general comment, I think one of our roles as trustees of the library should be to be thinking about what are our responsibilities individually and collectively to maybe talk about this in, in a forum or in a way that's appropriate, just to make sure that we're continuing to highlight the wonderful work that the library does and perhaps, you know, where there are needs, making sure that we're getting public awareness. Because something we talked about in the meeting was like, we're ranked very highly. The library is the number two most trusted institution in the city. But in the surveys, there's not a lot of like concerns or complaints coming through with the library. And so there's a little bit of a mismatch there when you're thinking about budgeting. You know, people complain about the roads, and so roads get funded. People love the library and they trust the library, but there isn't necessarily public demand for more funding to increase programming or extend hours. And so I just kind of wanted to make a general comment that this is something I think we should be considering more actively and just kind of continue to touch on at future meetings.
Thank you. Guess the next item, I'm only going to attend the directory report. Jeff, did you want to add anything?
Thank you, just a couple of things. So we've obviously touched on the budget a bit. We are in the FY 2025 budget cycle with the city. That will be lasting for several months. We submitted our budget request for the operating budget and the CIP budget as well. There were a couple of new CIP projects that we added. And we did request again for an increase of funding to the electronic replacement program, part of the CIP. That's our, essentially our IT budget. That's been $110,000 for the last six or seven years, so it's been very flat. And we really need some more money in that budget, so we're hoping that that will come through. We're at a point right now where we are turning over our, a lot of our technology, the computers in particular, on an almost 10-year cycle, which is insane when you think about the lifecycle of standard PC. Usually industry standard is going to be about three to five years for government. Anything beyond that becomes unsustainable at a point. So we are looking at other options too, including decreasing the number of computers that we offer. So far, that has not impacted the public at all, and it has not impacted staff of our big Michael, how we're able to spend those limited resources to improve our ability to turn over that cycle. So that is something to be aware of. A couple of other highlights, the Virgin Group is going to be here next month. So November 4th, they should be flying in. There's a four-person group that's going to be coming out, two people that are driving a truck and two people that are flying. And they will be doing the install from November 5th through about November 18th or so. And this is for the children's area improvements, the refurbishment there at Eastern and at Fairmount. So we're very excited for that to come to fruition. And then again, a reminder for the grand opening, that is going to be on December 2nd at Eastern in the morning and then at Fairmount in the afternoon. So it'd be great to have a lot of people there in support of that area and for the ribbon cutting as well. A couple of employees were able to attend the Iowa Library Association Annual Conference, which was in review last week. And Steve did a great job with this session on box of a retiring trustee. And then Christie Seagram is also present to do a presentation on Battle Books. So it's really great to have a good representation for the library, and Steve did a great job with that. And next month, the other cool thing is Dinoember. So I'm told that the dinosaurs this year might help out with the installations that are going to be occurring too. So stay tuned for that. Also in your packet, there are a couple of blue sheets. These, I wanted to make sure that you saw what those were. These were what we had presented to the city as a business case for continued funding for the two ARPA-related positions. As a reminder, those ones started in October of 2021, and we have funding guaranteed through December 30th of 2024. So we requested continued funding through FY 25 and longer. And right now, we had that verbal commitment from the city that they provided that ARPA funds hold out. They are interested in continuing the funding up for those positions on a year-to-year basis. I believe that ARPA funding, federal apartments, state and all funds have to be extended by December 30th of 2026. So this will extend our ability to keep those positions and programs going for a couple more years, providing the city is able to have that funding for us. And you can see just the remarkable impact of these, both for the library's social worker and the library early literacy coordinator positions.
Now, when I read those blue sheets, there was a lot of information in there about the effect that those two positions have. And so I think that that's an important selling point to, you know, continuing the funding for that, those positions. Anything more?
Happy to answer any questions.
Could you tell a little bit about that Fred Lowe, the music thing?
Yeah, yeah, so that was a grant that a special collection supervisor applied for through Historic Document Preservation Program. And we were successful in the funding for that, that allowed us to digitize that collection of materials.
Has that collection been here the whole time?
We have it, yeah. It's just not readily accessible. So this will be an opportunity to make it available to more people and then also as a preservation copy. So we can get the items digitized. Unfortunately, because of copyright, we can't get them online, but we can't make them accessible in any of our libraries.
Anything else? Next item on the agenda is council meeting. Anything else, Marion?
Only other thing, just that you'll see on the agenda, it doesn't, relates to the environment around the library. So there is an item before, in a presentation that we had a couple of weeks ago about the plan now that we have for the conversion of the two one-way streets back to their original two, two-way configurations. And so the plan presented was, and this impacts the library only because you're downtown, and the conversion will go from, will go from Marquette to Harrison. I'm sorry, to River Drive, so it will impact what's happening here. The, but it's tied because there's, the other project that's happening, that is the one that sort of triggered to the discussion of the one ways back to two ways to move forward again after bubbling around for a decade or so, was the resurfacing of Third and Fourth Street. And so that will start, and it will start with Third Street. The plan is to start with Third Street. It will be next year. They're going out to, hopefully, this, in December of this year with their plans. Of course, they've been talking to IDOT, but with their formal planning. And what you'll see on council is a resolution to purchase some of the lighting. It's, it's lighting for the conversion, but also for some other things that are being replaced at the same time. But you'll see that, but, but it, and we, and we have to order that early because it's, it takes a long time to get it. So that's why it's coming so quickly. But they will be looking, the, the plan is first on Third Street to go ahead and put the, get the RFP out in the, this winter, and then the biz back and to start that work next year, on Third Street. They won't be doing right now Third and Fourth at the same time. The other thing they're doing that is happening is, and then that's, and then the next year will be, of 2025 will be Fourth Street. So they'll do one and then the other. The, the other thing that's happening, and you've seen that if you've traveled any west of downtown, is they are, Iowa American Water has been going through replacing lead pipe with other connections all through the city. That was, that's part of what was happening, locusts, you know, in the spring. And so the, all of those subterranean connections that need to be changed will be done prior to the work. Now, I don't know how much of that has to actually be done in the downtown area. I suspect a lot of that's already been done here. But, but, but that is, but that will all be happening for the, for the, the road, the road work actually starts. So you'll be seeing, you know, lots of places where they're putting up, you know, signs, and it's usually the water company. They're replacing a lot of hydrants right now. So I kind of wish that they would have a sign when it's Iowa Water and we would have a sign when it's our. I suggested this because I can't keep up with it. And I certainly couldn't tell you on any given day what was going on. I get the, all the things, and everybody, if you want a road closure, if you want to sign up for that, have at it. But you'll get about five a day. It's not limited. So anyway, I wanted to let you know about that as you start to hear, you know, about the purchase of the, the signals and things like that. I don't know if anybody has any other questions than me. There was one other thing springing off. I just would, without trying to be political, there's going to be at least two new aldermen that have not previously been on council in Seventh and Eighth. So I would really encourage you to consider, you know, as soon as, you know, as soon as the election's over and it's been certified that you take them out for coffee and start to let them know about the library. Because it might be people who not have had a relationship, they might, I don't know, maybe they have a great relationship. I don't know who they're going to be, but there'll be at least two new and perhaps a third new. So, you know, I, I just, always a good idea before they get into the hubbub and the office and just the whole water coming out, the tsunami of being on council when you start, you might consider doing it then and getting your foot in early, just a suggestion. That's really all I have. Unless somebody has questions for me?
Thank you, Marion. So moving to new business. First item on the agenda is discussion of the cafe space at Eastern.
So that was me, I asked to put that on the agenda. I, I attended a library program, actually, to tour the Iowa Food Bank. And then a couple of weeks later, I was in Coralville, meeting with some clients, and I stopped into the Coralville Library between my appointments. And when I was at the Coralville Library, I was really impressed and pleased to see that part of what they have there at the Coralville Library is a little mini food pantry. And so when I toured the food bank, they were saying, you know, obviously, well, maybe not obviously, but that the food bank is kind of like the repository, and they purchase the food and they store it and they sort it. And then different food pantries, you know, kind of what we think of as the churches or the community outreach organizations come pick up on a weekly basis to take the food and actually distribute it to the people that need it. And so, you know, seeing that Coralville had this food pantry on site that is stocked by their food bank and seeing the challenges that we've had for as long as honestly I've been at the library or involved with the library with the cafe space at Eastern, I got to thinking that maybe this is something we could consider in limited scope. You know, because I know we've had at least two, if not three tenants that have fallen through in our attempts to lease that cafe space. And we hear from the business owners that it's really some questions on economic viability and economic climate and the, the amount of foot traffic that they're getting. And so I thought, you know, maybe in, at Coralville, you know, they have kind of a shelf with dry hoods, and then they have almost like a beverage refrigerator for some perishable items. So I'm not saying to use the whole food pantry or the whole cafe space, but I thought it's something we could consider, you know, because we do have a cooler there. I mean, we do have some extra shelving space. It seems like it would be a nice outreach effort. Now, the other thing I thought of is, I don't know the demographics and the likelihood of people that are visiting Eastern being people that would, you know, be experiencing food insecurity. But I at least wanted to just share what I had seen and what I had learned through the library programming and for visiting another library and just suggest that it's something we, we talk about and maybe consider, maybe it doesn't work, but I wanted to bring it up. So I was just trying to start a conversation, obviously no motion, no questions.
All right, yeah. If I could just make an observation, I wonder if the demographics of the people who visit the Eastern Library, just to guess on my part, would probably not be, just an assumption, not be people who would utilize a food bank, but they may be people who'd be willing to donate to a food bank. And so it's possible that we, we could operate sort of as a drop-off spot for the, you know, the main food bank down here on where they're at on the west side. Just, I mean, you know, I just wonder if that might be the best, an option. I don't know. I do think it's a good discussion to have because we have, we have had at least two or three different vendors. Is it two or three, or was it more, that have gone through that space? And unfortunately, economically, doesn't work. And so, you know, it was a nice idea, but it just didn't seem to And so, you know, it was a nice idea that just didn't seem to manifest itself.
So there's a couple of it.
Can you hear us, Craig?
Now I can hear you, I just don't have any video.
Okay.
Okay, so you've got to make the motion again.
So there was a motion to table the discussion of the last item that they're about board development basics until next month when Malvita is here.
I got you back, by the way. I got you back, by the way, and, and Laura, it was a great idea. I hope we pursue it.
Okay. So do you support tabling that discussion until next month? Yes or no?
Yes.
Okay, okay. And I also vote yes, that means that passes. Okay, so we tabled that. Then now the next item on the agenda is a motion to adjourn. We have a motion to adjourn? Amanda motions, is there a second?
Second.
And Joe seconds. I'll call the roll. My vote is yes. Craig?
Yes.
Yes. Laura?
Yes.
Amanda?
Yes.
Joe? So that passes, we are adjourned.
Thank you all.